Hi, this is Chris Joyce. I'm on the Voter Information Committee. And annually, we like to have a program that reviews the articles on the town warrant. We don't necessarily go through all of them, but many of them, and what I tend to call big-ticket items, important items. We're going to introduce now Joe Powers, our Town Administrator, Carol Coppola, Finance Director, and John Chori, Chair of Financial Committee. We'll start briefly with budget message and financial outlook. And with John, the Financial Committee's role in reviewing the warrant and helping put it all together. And I think I'm ready to go, Joe. How are you?
Certainly. Thank you, Chris, for having us. You know, I can make the joke that it was only a few months ago that we were here, but it truly was only a few months ago that we were here when our annual town meeting for 2020 was back in September. But as we discussed before, I just wanted to first start out and just say that, you know, this is a different town meeting that we'll be going to in less than three weeks now because of the untimely passing of two wonderful Harwich residents and really just two individuals that have done so much for the town. Of course, I'm referring to Selectmen Vice Chairman Stephen Ford and super volunteer wonderful woman Peggy Rose. And so, you know, we'll get into this town meeting, we'll get the business done, but it won't be the same. And we certainly offer our thoughts to their families on those losses, and they will be tremendously.
I agree. Peggy Rose usually ran this program for voter information, and I'm filling in, but not with the same background that she had and experience in town. Thank you for those comments, Joe. So we'll move on to the budget message, perhaps?
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yep. So, as you recall, my message to the Selectmen in my budget message, I think going back to February 8th, was one of caution and optimism. Caution because as soon as I'm done speaking, I'll put my mask back on because we're obviously still in the throes of the pandemic, again, evidenced by the fact that we will be outdoors again on Saturday, May 8th. Optimistic, though, because we're all getting vaccinated and we can start to daydream about better days ahead. And optimistic because we have, through the great efforts of the people you have here today, Carol and John, certainly the administration team, Selectmen and Department Heads and everybody really just focusing on the true needs of the town while we get through the pandemic. And we've been buoyed by the fact that Harwich is still a great place to live, visit, and dine in. So there is reason for caution, and there's also reason for optimism. You know, the warrant that we have has 49 articles, and the biggest are the five operating budgets. I don't know if you wanted me to get into the details, or if you'd like me to defer to Carol at this point.
Yeah, defer to Carol.
Absolutely, gladly and happily.
Carol, you're going to tell us a little bit about the financial outlook?
Okay, sure. Thank you very much. A year ago, we were very cautious in any expenditures that were realized by the town of Harwich. The Board of Selectmen and Administration took that very seriously and froze the budget. And with that said, it was prudent measures that they took because it was, there was just so much uncertainty about, you know, what the ramifications of the pandemic were. And so, they were extremely cautious and very conservative, which certainly helped the community financially. Those were, again, those were prudent measures. We came into the FY '22 budget with a free cash balance of just over $3.9 million. There were, the town also realizes some other balances in reserves, stabilization balance of $4.1 million, and OPEB, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits Other Than Pension, of just under $3.7 million. So the financial state of Harwich is stable, and it's healthy at this point. We believe that that's going to continue to build on reserves and continue to be a healthy financial state of affairs for the town of Harwich. The town realizes revenues in multitude of categories, I would say, from federal revenue. And there's been substantial support for COVID expenses with regard to federal monies coming in and those that are about to come in in May. We don't believe that we'll be receiving those revenues in May, and those are from the most recent ARPA funds that were approved on March 11th. We don't believe that we're going to receive them before town meeting, but we expect to receive them shortly thereafter, as well as guidance as to how those funds can be expended. The town has also realized revenue in the form of state revenues that are, some of them are entitlement funds, and some are competitive grants that we capitalize on, as well as other local revenues that have been strong. Certainly, we've been strong in the area of short-term rentals and your traditional lodging revenue, which I'll say took us a little bit by surprise in this fiscal year. In addition to that, we have very strong revenues in the area of Cranberry Valley, Golf Course, and the Harbor. So I believe that going into fiscal year '22 will be, the town of Harwich will be in a very stable environment financially.
Wonderful. That's good news. I'm sure our voters and tax peers are glad, will be glad to hear that. Shall we talk now about, what did I say we wanted to talk about? The operating budget or move to the articles we talked about for you, Carol? The 42, the stabilization revolving, I'm sorry, I got mixed up.
That's quite all right. We're prepared to go through all the articles in any way that you want.
Yeah, right.
Absolutely.
Okay, Article 42, 43, 44, and 45. I think we said 42 you might speak to, Joe?
Certainly. Yeah, and just to take a quick step back, Article 41 is the article that we'll use to modify the revolving fund for the Conservation Commission.
Right.
So that's why you'll see just that one is looking to change. And if I remember correctly, in my discussions with the Conservation Agent, it's trying to leverage fees and fines that come in to more accurately capture their needs to then turn around to support the department. The Article 42 gets to the spending authorization and the funding, excuse me, the spending levels that are proposed in that article are level funded where it was for the 2020 Annual Town Meeting.
Right.
You'll recall in 2020 that the stabilization, excuse me, the revolving fund for Cultural Center was increased. That level of $225,000 remains. So there was an increase in 2020, it remained stable in '21, and we're very hopeful that we'll have the revenue through that to maintain the operations of the Cultural Center.
And then 43, if you don't mind, which is stabilization fund? Now, I think Carol's going to speak to that one.
As I mentioned earlier, the balance in the stabilization fund currently is just over $4.1 million. At the town meeting in September, for the current fiscal year budget of 2021, the town voted to support the budget or balance the budget by $574,171 of stabilization funds. This Article 43 moves to replace those funds, in addition to that, to add another $500,000 to the stabilization fund. That fund is, you know, your, I guess we can call it your rainy day fund. It's a reserve that puts the town in a position that if there was a significant challenge financially, the town would be able to go to the voters at town meeting or a special town meeting and be able to use those funds to offset some unanticipated expenses, such as the pandemic that's happening right now. Article 44 speaks to the OPEB Trust Fund. Again, that's Other Post-Employment Benefits Other Than Pension. That fund has a balance currently of just under $3.7 million. The most recent actuarial valuation of the liability for the town of Harwich is 42, just over $42 million. So this fund supports that liability and sets aside $500,000 to add to the balance of that fund.
Great. I don't have to ask what's open. You just get it out there. That's wonderful. Thank you. And then 45, unpaid bills, $21,000?
Yes. And this is a common article that appears in the warrant. Unfortunately, if the town has not received a vendor invoice in a, I'd say, a timely manner, or if it may, perhaps it gets lost in the mail, there could be lots of, if different, I guess, circumstances that would not allow the town to pay vendors in a timely manner. And once we close our year-end, which happens in August, then this must come before town meeting. These bills must come before town meeting in order to actually pay the bills, and they require a four-fifth vote. And so, we have a few bills, invoices, vendor invoices, that we are including in this article totaling $21,349.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. So I think now to the operating budget and some of the capital items, Joe?
Sure. So of the 49 articles, five of them are operating budgets.
Yeah.
The first, of course, is the town operating budget of 39, just over 39 million. That's Article 4. As we talked about at length in the financial review, the operating budget represents a level-funded budget as much as we can, and that means, you know, accounting for semi-fixed and fixed costs, which, you know, can't be restricted in that manner. And if memory serves correctly, what we're looking at is just a 0.6% increase year over year in the operating budget. And that's a testament to the hard work of Carol and her financial team, as well as the department heads getting to that level. Because, again, that's the operations of the town. Generally speaking, that's how we fund what it is we do for the citizens of our town and the visitors of our town. And, you know, beyond that, we've got the Montemoy Regional School Budget, Article 5, coming in at just over $27 million. Of course, there's been great discussion, and right before town meeting, there's going to be a second community forum. I believe it's Thursday before town meeting, the first Thursday in May. And that's a discussion between the towns of Chatham and Harwich about how they want to handle the elementary schools. And we've had great discussion this year about how that impacts upon the formula. That impacts both towns, and we know quite well here in Harwich how much the disparity and the percentages is growing.
Because the elementary school in Chatham has lesser amount of students? Is that correct?
Well, correct. It is true to say that both towns have seen a reduction in enrollment for both. However, it's a far greater drop in the town of Chatham.
Yeah.
However, I guess for the purposes of town meeting, and Carol mentioned it earlier, and I'm going to emphasize it, we are going into town meeting with a balanced budget.
Right.
And the budget that was presented both by Montemoy Regional School District and Cape Tech provide the funding necessary to ensure the educational experience of the students that go there. And we were able to get to a budget level for Montemoy despite the headwinds of the formula and the percentage differences. That's an ongoing discussion. It may end up causing a special town meeting in the fall of this year to address that. But for this town meeting, we have the budget in place, and we're moving forward.
Wonderful.
Cape Tech, we are, as the Harwich part of Cape Tech, we're actually the Chatham in that version, if you will, where we've seen a decline in our enrollment there. So it's a decline in the overall budget for Cape Tech. And last but not least, our water and wastewater. So water continues its operation as it's been doing. Article 7 gets to just over $4 million. And we now are starting to see a greater operating budget for wastewater. We have it at just over half a million at $515,331.
And I'll just mention, that's Article 8. I'm going to do that every now and then.
Thank you very much.
And the Harwich, the Water Operating Department is Article 7 at $4.2 million, right?
And then the totality of those five operating budgets comes to just over $72 million.
Yep. And the Water Department's operating budget comes from their own revenue. Is that correct?
Sorry, I was getting my notes.
Yeah.
That is correct.
Right.
And then that is retained earnings.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm just noticing that, sorry, not noticing, but you'll see in the table related to that article, there's an additional $50,000 for their other post-employment benefits.
Oh, right.
And that goes back to a vote of 2014 town meeting.
Got it. And there's debt in there of $740,000. And what would the debt be? What is that debt? Is that an unfair question? Should I?
I'm going to pause so that Carol can jump in on that one, because I couldn't speak articulately to that.
The Water Department has taken on capital projects in the past number of years, whether it be to replace water tanks or to repair water tanks, and just to protect the water systems and the community. And so, that debt supports those capital projects.
Got it. Thank you. Do we want to also mention the wellhead water supply, Article 23, also from retained earnings and the water supply exploration?
Sure. So if I could get to that.
Let me see.
So those are two of the 15 articles that support the capital outlay plan for fiscal year '22. And as you've indicated there, I believe, if memory serves correctly, there are four articles.
Right, two more.
Let me see here. So Article 23.
Yeah.
That's the land acquisition that you mentioned. And what that is, it's an effort by the Water Department to acquire the lands around and abutting the wellhead and water supply for the town. They're using retained earnings for that. However, we are seeking a reimbursement, or will be seeking a reimbursement, from the Cape Cod Commission for mitigation funds that we have available to reimburse, for lack of a better word.
Yeah.
So we will use retained earnings upfront, but are very hopeful that we'll be able to get that. I've been working with Kristi Senatore and her team, as has Dan Pelletier. And so, there's a really good story around that one. The other articles get to, they're using their retained earnings for Articles 24, 25, and 26. 24 gets to the exploring new sources for the water supply beyond the wellheads that we presently have. Article 25 is going to be very beneficial, I think, going forward. That is tying into a mass DOT project, Department of Transportation project, which I believe is expected for fiscal year '24. It's an opportunity for us to replace water mains while they're opening the road there.
Right.
And that's on 28, heading towards Dennis. And then 26 is a replacement of one of the generators, which is standard maintenance.
Right. And it's a backup generator, and if it goes, they don't have power.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Maybe we could move on to PEG funds quickly? We have, I think, two of them. The first one is Article 9, and it seems like we're getting money from Comcast to pay, to forward to the Cape Cod Media Center. So that's kind of straightforward, perhaps?
Correct. It's, we are finalizing negotiations with Comcast. We'll be executing another 10-year contract very soon. And as you've indicated, this is the town of Harwich supporting Cape Cod Community Media Center, which helps, I believe, Mid-Cape and Outer Cape, and it's a great partnership. And again, those funds are through the Public Education Government or PEG access funds. And that's a different article, if you will, an additional article this year. The other article is the ongoing work that Jamie Caleb, Jack, and their team have been working on to improve the equipment in various meeting locations and all of that.
Right.
And again, that's through the PEG access funds.
Right. And so, our voters understand that's revenue that is given to us from Comcast. This isn't their tax bill, nothing. Yeah.
Absolutely right.
Those are joyful ones, I think. All right. So, let's see, fingerprinting for the town, Article 12?
It's a replacement machine for the Police Department, and it's the only item we have for capital items under $50,000. And as with the majority of the capital items, that will be funded through free cash.
And then, could we move to the two, 18 and 19, Department radios for fire and police? And then the Fire Department's pumper ladder truck?
Sure. And if I could, I'd like to go 18, 19, and I think it's 20.
Yeah, road maintenance?
Yep. So Article 18, as you've indicated, it's updating the radios for public safety, so that's police and fire.
Yeah.
And this ties back to a mandate, mandated upgrade that the Commonwealth is insisting upon. However, despite the insistence on the upgrade, the good news is the Fire Department has applied for a grant to significantly offset those costs.
Wonderful.
So again, the upfront will be funded through free cash, but very hopeful of obtaining that fiscal year '22 grant from the Commonwealth. Article 19, as you indicated, is the Quint. I think I can be that familiar with it because this is a topic, really, that's been around since I started, and I'll be here two years next month. So this is the combination pumper ladder fire truck. I think it's a, it was a great initiative by retired Chief Clark.
Right.
That current Chief LeBlanc has picked up. And I think it's great because this combination truck handles two issues, obviously the pumper and the ladder. There was one that had been overdue, there was one that was coming up. So by accomplishing this, we will satisfy the equipment needs with that one purchase. This also is the first of two debt exclusion questions that will appear on the ballot on May 18th. And if memory serves correctly, this will be question number one on the ballot. The price is significant, $1.138 million. When it was first being discussed, it was just at a million, but because we had to delay because of the impacts of COVID and other matters, that price has gone up. What that also means is if we don't do it now, it's going to become that much more expensive. And again, we're replacing a truck that's out of service and a truck that's scheduled to be taken out of service. So critical expenditure that requires not only town meeting approval, but adoption by the voters at the town election.
Right.
And the second of the two debt exclusions is Article 20, which is to fund the fiscal year 2022 road maintenance program. That is for $700,000. And again, as always, we will have an offset to match that almost dollar for dollar. Our Chapter 90 apportionment, which we understand to be just over $676,000 projected for that time as well. I do want to go back to a moment to my earlier message about caution and optimism, as we've talked about the budget. The fact that we have the two debt exclusions, and only the debt exclusions, also ties back to the Selectmen's Directive to me, to reduce the use of overrides and debt exclusion. I know there are folks that would say that two is too many, but comparatively speaking, this is a very trim ballot, if you will, with regard to debt exclusions. And I can't think of two more critical items to be used for debt exclusion.
Do you see the road maintenance ever becoming part of the operating budget?
I see that discussion happening as early as June of this year, as, and not to steal the chairman's thunder when he will get into the capital and CPC articles, but that's part of the discussions that will take place going forward. Very soon after this town meeting, I'll be meeting with department heads, committee chairs, to sketch out fiscal year '23, but also the next five years, for things to do with operating budget, capital budget, and community preservation. I was thinking this morning that I was going to talk about it as an overhaul. I don't think it's an overhaul. I think it's just a revamping of the process.
Right.
And starting very soon after the last town meeting.
Right.
Because town meeting is an annual event that takes place every day, in my opinion.
And John, I forgot to ask you in the beginning to discuss how FinCom, Financial Committee, fits into the preparation of the warrant and what the team does.
Yeah, thank you. Hi, my name's John Chori. I'm Chair of the Finance Committee in town. And thank you, Chris, and Carol, and Joe. I want to thank them both. They help us, our committee tremendously with requests for information numbers throughout the year. How we fit in is in per the town charter, the Finance Committee is tasked with weighing in, voting, or responding to every single warrant article that is presented at town meeting, whether or not it has a financial impact or not. Some of these warrant articles don't have any financial impact, but per town charter, we're required to vote on them or at least discuss them. And that's how we fit in.
Wonderful, thank you. I apologize for not starting off with that. There's also an Article 21 for DPW replacing some vehicles. Is that still current, or did I have a?
It is, it is current, and it is a reduced list from what the DPW Director was originally envisioning. And I think equally important, it also has an element of surplus.
Right.
So it's not going to be a straight one-for-one exchange. However, the two purposes of the article are first to approve replacing equipment that's necessary. You can see that it's a front-end loader, a dump truck, and then to pick up, or pick up a van.
Pick up a van, yeah.
And then, what we're looking to do is town meeting authorizing the Selectmen to direct me to seek other use of those other properties, or those other vehicles. We don't expect any, and then they can be disposed of as surplus. So we might be able to get some trade-ins or some.
Some money.
Some junk value, but something to come back.
Great.
But this does meet the well-thought-out and organized vehicle replacement process that our DPW Director, Len Hooper, has established. And that's where we're at for fiscal year '22.
Perfect. I'd like to talk maybe now about the libraries, or have you talk about the libraries. Brooks Free Library is looking for a roof replacement for $135,000. And I think there may be a typo in the, I'm not sure I'm saying that right in the warrant, because I think this was originally submitted to the capital plan in 2012 for fiscal year 2017. And then was going to be in 2020, but then, I think, was moved to this, 2021, and deferred to 2022. Am I making any sense?
Complete sense. And you've given me an opportunity to also speak about an additional document that will be prepared and available at town meeting.
Oh, good.
What I call the motions book.
Yeah.
So because we're not able to project, because we won't have a screen outdoors, we'll have the motion book. I'll also be using that as an errata sheet, if you will.
Got it.
So there are a couple of errors that I would blame the scrivener. However, they are simply scrivener's errors, and those will be corrected. When we get to a discussion on Bell's Neck Road property.
Oh, right.
There's two articles for there. There's a scrivener's error in one of those. But you're correct. This is, the roof has been on the capital outlay plan for several years, and it's been postponed. It was, there was a great discussion with Capital Outlay Committee in December and January. I asked our Facilities Maintenance Director.
Sean.
Sean Libby to be present, and emphasized, he emphasized that this is a critical project for fiscal year '22. We've delayed it because, as Carol said, you know, in dealing with pandemic in 2020, we really had to stall on a number of projects. This is one that we can't stall on any longer.
Yeah. And then on Article, that was Article 16 for our viewers. And 47, it's to provide some funding to Chase and Harwich Port Libraries. They're not part of Brooks Free Library. And this year, it became a Board of Selectmen article versus the petitioners, as we've seen in the past.
That's correct. And I want to thank the board. I actually took that on to be an administrator's article, because I didn't think it was right to ask folks in these instances for these standard articles that support the town to go outdoor to door during pandemic. The board, I think, in a wonderful gesture, then took those articles on as their own, because these articles do support the town. And although you are correct that it is not related to Brooks Free Library, it does get to the town. to the town's overall commitment to our libraries, and it's, it gets to our level of commitment that the state certifies through the State Board of Library.
Accreditation?
Thank you, State Library Accreditation Program, there you go. So it just demonstrates the town's commitment to all of its libraries.
Right.
Be those association or our own Brooks Free Library.
And both of those libraries are delightful to visit, and they also, you know, you can return Brooks Free Library books there.
Yes.
And they make sure they get back to across the street here. Thank you. How about sidewalks?
So lots to do with sidewalks. First is the, really the success recently of our DPW Department and our Engineering Department. As you know, we've been talking about sidewalks in Harwich Port since before the Harbor project was done.
Yeah.
But spurred on by the letter written by the 10-year-old young man in Harwich Port that did a great job of bringing attention to that, soon after the Lieutenant Governor was here to christen the Harbor project and all that. We've now enjoyed some success at the state level where this project, where we didn't see much hope before, is back on track. Unfortunately, I had to raid funds last year
Right.
to balance the budget, so we're looking for $200,000 to replenish that commitment from the town, offset by an incredibly generous donation by Mr. Paul Manning.
No kidding.
And it just gets to the, his love and support of the town, and really this project. And so that's a great thing that's coming around, and it'll take a few years, but I think it's just remarkable to think that we can envision safe sidewalks in Harwich Port.
That would be lovely.
The other sidewalk that I think you're getting to is a revitalization of an effort that started under my predecessor several years ago. I was struck by the marketing concept, if you will, of the center from the center to the center.
Right.
And so what it is, is making sure that our sidewalks that exist, traversing from the community center through Harwich Center onto the cultural center
Right.
are ADA compliant, you know, there's certain widths and standards that need to be there, and so there's $50,000 that we need to finalize the design concept. Once we get the design concept done, we'll be seeking community development block grants or CDBG, let me take my mask off and say that one, CDBG grants that come from the federal government through the state government. The program was not utilized in fiscal year 21 because of the pandemic, and we're hopeful that program will resume in fiscal year 22.
Now, I got confused at one of the Board of Selectmen's meeting where there were some funds available for Harwich Center, but we wouldn't be able to go to bid fast enough.
So that, yeah, that gets to a shared street program
Okay.
that's a time-sensitive grant program from Mass DOT, Department of Transportation, and what it's meant to do is to help, like we have here in Harwich Center, businesses that have been impacted by COVID.
Okay.
It's meant to be temporary, non-permanent changes, if you will, so what we're looking to do is to restripe some of the parking, to make parking more accessible within the center. The point of that is we received a grant of over $142,000 back in February, but we must complete the project before, or by May 31st of this year.
Okay.
But again, it's meant to be temporary, it's meant to assist businesses, and I didn't do it justice with the work that Selectman McManus and our town engineer, Griffin Ryder, have been doing on it, but it's meant to be an offset
Okay.
to the effects of COVID-19. We are hopeful that those short-term projects will help us as we get into the longer-term projects of the ADA compliant and working Harwich Center.
Great, thank you for that. So how about the CPC, Community Preservation Committee articles? They run from Article 27, I believe, to 31, and I think the first one is getting funds in there and for each of the objectives. Let me just take a peek here.
So Article 27 is what I would consider to be an administrative article.
Yeah.
That's where we're, if I can say it inelegantly, we're moving the money to certain buckets as available, and then the articles themselves are, I had it from Article 28
Yeah.
through Article 36, and I know that one of them, there's a Scrivener's error, so if I can just address
Yeah.
that right now. So it gets to Article 40, which is
Bell's Neck Building will repair.
Well, sorry, no, I'm actually mixing up
Yeah.
my community preservation with my capital, I apologize.
Yeah.
So I'll keep it to community preservation
Okay.
and get to my error later.
Alrighty.
And trying not to keep saying the word error, but there it is.
Okay, so some people might not understand where the CPC money comes from, so could you speak to that about our tax bill and how money comes in to address recreation?
So
Why am I forgetting, oh my God.
Open space recreation
Yeah.
and others. I'm also forgetting.
Yeah, wait, no.
I'd like to turn to our Finance Director.
Historic.
Thank you, exactly, of course.
And affordable housing.
Affordable housing, right. Oh.
Yeah, the lights just changed, so obviously
Right.
there's not electricity.
So Community Preservation Act was adopted by the Town of Harwich a number of years ago, and that act places a surcharge on property taxes, real estate taxes of the Town of Harwich. It can be up to 3%, and the town did vote for it to be 3%. And those efforts support, just as was mentioned before, open space, historic preservation, community housing, and then recreation or undesigned expenses. There are certain regulations and requirements of how those funds can be spent, and they must be in accordance with the laws that, the Mass General laws that support community preservation. And in addition to that, the Community Preservation Committee itself is a voluntary committee. They do have administration expenses, and those expenses here in Article 27 are $25,000 to support their efforts. So I, do you, in addition to that, Article 28 talks about funding some debt service, so the, from the land bank debt, which the Town of Harwich supported a number of years ago, to purchase land for open space and conservation and those measures, that debt will be fully extinguished in FY '24.
Oh, that was a question, thank you for that, yeah.
And so this article supports the annual debt service for land bank debt.
Good. And then, there are a number of items in Article 29 that are under $50,000. I'm not sure if we want to go through them, they all fit the, of course, the requirements of the act. I think for time, I'd rather go to Article 30, which is East Harwich Methodist Church Cemetery Gravestone Project, and that's looking for $112,000 coming from the funds. Anybody want to speak to that? I don't know much about it.
I don't know, John, if you want to speak. This is a situation where the Finance Committee recommended indefinite postponement, the Board of Selectmen has recommend accept and adopt.
Right.
To that point there, we had some questions on the legality, if you want to call it, of that article.
Uh huh.
One, that the town may or may not own this cemetery, for one thing.
Right.
And I haven't heard a definite answer, one way or the other, there. And then two, that this is a church, and in, like Carol said, in some of the requirements for CPC funding is churches, separation of church and state has to be observed. So we were just waiting for legality of this article, and that's why we indefinitely postponed the article.
So at town meeting, that may change.
That may change, it may change, as Joe has mentioned, we meet sometimes with the Selectmen right before town meeting to reconcile any difference of thoughts and opinions we have
Yeah.
and have a joint recommendation, because that's the desire of both our committees, is to go to town with a unified front on these articles.
I seem, I seem to remember CPC funds being used at the Congregational Church on 39 for stained glass windows.
That's what I've heard in the past, but the main point on this one was just the legality.
Yeah, perfect.
If legal comes back to us and says, yes
Yeah.
you can use the money, then we might have a difference of opinion there on that.
Okay.
And so that's that article.
Thank you for that. And I'll just mention, I'm on the board of the Harwich Historical Society, which leases from the town Brooks Academy building, so I'm probably not going to say too much and hope you all will take, just, you know.
Chris, could I go back to Article 30 very quickly?
Oh, yes.
Just on a few things.
Yeah.
So we have received legal input on Article 30 insofar as the legal department is still trying to confirm ownership relative to the area where the gravestones are. However, whether it's still owned by the church or by the town, there's no legal impediment for this project to go forward, and that's why the article can be presented in the form in which it is. So it is allowable. Attorney John Georgia from KP Law can speak far better than I, but there was a test case that I believe gets to Central Mass Town
Uh huh.
where if it is not, if the funds are not used for church purposes
Okay.
and that is more getting into, you know, religious functions, if you will.
Yeah.
So your recollection is correct, things like stained glass windows, repairing gravestones, those are all things that the courts have upheld are in appropriate use, and don't run afoul of separation of church and state. For me, really, the only outstanding legal issue at this point, like I said, is getting to the ownership of the property in question. There is information that's been shared with council, it's just not conclusive at this time.
Got it.
But the council has opined that this is an article that is properly in the warrant and can properly proceed, and there are no legal impediments to it. Now, I think there's a greater public policy question of, is this how we want to use our community preservation funds, and for that, I will leave that to debate at town meeting.
Okay, great. All right, so shall we move then to Brooks Academy, structural improvements? I must say that I hope there's a little something at town meeting that describes the work. Are we running, wait, yeah, because it's a little vague to the people who may not have been paying attention to Board of Selectmen and the FinCom.
And in the spirit of the times, I'd like to start and then give John the chance to rebut.
Yeah, go.
Let give John the last word on this one. However, this, you know, there's a couple of things that came up at the Finance Committee discussion, and just to emphasize, and I know, Chris, that you and your colleagues know, but the Brooks Academy building is a town building. We have a tenant in the Harwich Historical Society. However, the work that's being contemplated under this article and future work is the responsibility of the town through the Board of Selectmen, because our agreement between the town and the Historical Society is very clear that the town must be responsible for the building and the environs around it.
Yeah.
And so this is a long-time effort to really get into the stability of the structure itself. This ties back to, if I remember correctly, Brooks Academy Museum Committee Chair David Spitz several years ago, getting funds from community preservation to do a structural evaluation. Well, that structural evaluation has come back, and we know that there's significant work that needs to be done. And so this is a sizable dollar amount, but as we've talked about before, it's community preservation funds, it's not a direct tax hit.
Yeah.
It's money that's been provided to the town through taxpayers, and it matches the historical preservation requirements under the Community Preservation Act. And last but not least, I would just say that as someone who washed ashore here six years ago, and have only heard the tales and seen the beautiful renderings of the Exchange Building, I am loath to be a party to any action that causes a similar fate for Brooks Academy. To me, there's nothing more iconic than the Brooks Academy Building itself, and as I've told people, it's literally embedded in our town seal, that's how iconic it is. So it's a big dollar amount, but it's a commitment that I think we need to maintain and to carry forward.
John, you wanted to speak to this also?
Yes, I did. It's like a lot of articles at town meeting, it's not necessarily the most expensive article that draws the most attention, even though this is an expensive article here, but we'll be talking about another one shortly. It's passion sometimes gets involved in articles, and I share the same passion as Joe just mentioned. I wasn't in town for the Exchange Building, but my wife was, and she remembers going to that building as a little girl, and the thought of tearing that down, and it's still remembered by lots of people in town, and the thoughts are carried over to the Brooks Academy. And in this Brooks Academy project, this is a considerable amount of money of 1.1 million dollars, and it's being put into the structural foundation of a building. So it's, you're spending a lot of money, but we're not going to see anything. The building will be stabilized, but we're not going to see the money being spent outside for aesthetic purposes or whatever. We've had a lot of discussion on our committee on this article. At first, we didn't even, when I brought it up once to vote on it, I couldn't get a second motion to vote on it even, but I was determined, as the Chair, to vote on all articles if possible. I feel it's a responsibility of our committee for the citizens of the town. We brought it up, had much discussion on it, and it was passed five to two to support this article. But I do want to mention that in talking with Joe about a number of things, financial impacts the town, one of the things we've talked about, and he's going to be moving on it, like he mentioned in June, is looking at long-term phasing of projects. We've had a number of projects in the past, one that comes to mind is Brooks Park. We've had, I think we're on phase five right now. Don't know what the total number of that five projects was, but it's a considerable amount of money. And I'd like to move forward now on phasing of projects as best we can to get a total cost of what it's going to take or what's envisioned for these articles. I know Brooks Academy, there's multiple phases involved. I've spoken with David Spitz, I have toured the facility myself personally, and in the prior career that I was in, I had a part-time responsibility for museum restoration around the world, from projects that were 200,000 up to 400 million renovation projects. And this renovation project here, we've heard estimates from the historic, the building group of roughly 2.5 up to 5 million dollars. I think it's closer to the 5 million dollar aspect of it, and that's all I want to do. I want to go to town meeting, telling the town citizens, the voters, that this is not just a 1.1 million dollar project, it's possibly a 5 million dollar project, and then we'll vote accordingly, so people are well informed of what's coming down the pike.
Right.
I think on this particular project too, since it is a structural project, it is an old building, I lifted my house here in town, there's lots of many unknowns. You don't know what you're going to do until you start digging. I think to Joe's credit, in this particular project is an extra larger contingency plan for this project, just for those unforeseen, which is, I applaud that.
Yeah.
And the good news on that, if that contingency isn't used, it's returned back to CPC.
Right.
So that's important to know. So the committee supported this five to two, again, there was much discussion on it, and that's my only comment, that I would want the town to be well informed of what the future costs on projects like this are, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. That was very helpful, I think, to our listeners out there. We don't have too much more time, and I'm wondering if there are any of the other CPC articles we want to highlight?
So I'm championed the bit to get to the capital article that relates to Five Bell's Neck Road, if I could use that.
Perfect, so that's 17, is that one?
It's Articles 17 and 40.
Forty?
And so it sneaks in to the capital, but ironically, Article 40 is the capital expense. So Article 17 actually gets to authorizing the Selectmen to sell the property. There were two votes of previous town meetings that authorized the board to lease, and then to lease for a 99-year period, and my predecessors tried and got, you know, no bidders, if you will, to do that. And recognizing that that building is in severe disrepair, and I've used the analogy that I'm very concerned about an overweight pigeon
[laughing]
sitting on the roof and doing God's work. Um, that's what gets to the other dollar amount. But I wanted to be clear, because there is some, uh, discussion about this. The $50,000 that's being, uh, contemplated under Article 40 is a significant amount of money. Um, but it, it, it's an intentional dollar amount. We expect that roof repair to be closer to the 20, $25,000 amount. What I didn't want to do is I didn't want to bury that into the, um, capital under $50,000.
Right.
Um, I wanted that to be a standalone discussion. And what I'm, what I'm asking and what the board has supported is give the board the authorization to sell the property, and we'll begin immediately after town meeting to undertake that endeavor. However, and, and John spoke, uh, and I appreciate the comments, um, before about contingencies. So that roof needs to be repaired if we want to, uh, retain that building on that property. The, uh, the efforts to lease it, I think, were unsuccessful because of the condition of the building. I do think we'll be successful in selling it. Um, there are at least two groups locally that are very interested in acquiring the property for the purpose of restoring and, uh, maintaining the building itself. Um, I'm just very skittish about, um, an act of God occurring. So first, Article 17 gets to
Selling.
the disposition of it by sale. The $50,000, it may never be, uh, necessarily needed if I'm able to get everything done. But as John has talked about before with contingencies, any number of things can go wrong when you go out to bid. There can be bid challenges. And it doesn't even have to be a party that's associated with a bid. Uh, bid challenges are allowed basically by anybody under the Commonwealth. And so it's, to me, it's a transparent approach to make sure that we have resources available to either dispose of the building by sale or if need be, firm up the building prior to sale. And that's where the two come in. The, uh, scrivener's error that I keep talking about for Article 40.
Yeah.
Um, relates to the fact that, um, and John, I need you to validate, but I believe the vote of the Finance Committee was to indefinitely postpone, um, that article for the $50,000. Um, however, if you look at the roll call vote, it says, accept and adopt.
Right.
So I believe the accurate, uh, recommendation that you see in bold in the warrant is correct for indefinite postponement. Uh, and they, uh, the Finance Committee's accept and adopt was incorrect.
Okay, yeah. Cause I, I did think it would have been.
Uh, it's, uh, we, we wanted to indefinitely, uh, not to accept and adopt the, the repair of the roof.
Right.
So, yeah, so tantamount to indefinite postponement, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But no issues with the sale, right?
No issues with the sales.
Right.
And then, Chris, if I could, I've neglected to say earlier, I keep talking about the warrant. Uh, the warrant will be published in accordance with our requirements under the charter this Thursday, April 22nd, and the Chronicle.
Right.
So the town meeting warrant will be published this week. And, um, the motions book will correct the scrivener's error made by the scrivener.
The scrivener, right.
Whomever that shall be.
Yeah, whoever that is. I don't know. Um, there are a couple other, uh, things here, uh, funding the chamber, Article 46, uh, promote the town, Chamber of Commerce, $30,000, uh, dollars. And then, uh, what we see each year for, uh, the Harwich Cultural Council, $3,600 to supplement, uh, si- state funds. And, and they use that money to, um, uh, award grants for, for the arts. Um, and then, do we want to talk a little bit about amending the charter for the capital outlay plan? Or did we already?
Yes, yes, yeah, yes, please, if I could.
Okay, 37.
So Article 37 is really meant to correct, um, uh, errors and inconsistencies from an article back in 2019.
Yeah.
And the net effect of this will turn our capital outlay plan into a five-year plan.
Right.
The text that was, uh, voted on in 2019, uh, indicated that it would be, do that, but it didn't change the actual language. So this is just meant, uh, to clean up the intent of town meeting. Uh, and I'm hoping it'll be non-controversial and go through. If it passes this year, it becomes a ballot question at next year's town election.
Oh, right, exactly.
And then we only have one, uh, zoning bylaw article. It relates to, uh, West Harwich DCPC.
Yeah.
These would be the design guidelines that, um, uh, married to that situation from last year. Uh, you know, the Board of Selectmen made it clear that given that we're doing an outdoor town meeting, they didn't want to have a number of zoning bylaw changes. But it's generally understood that the design guidelines are necessary for the West Harwich District of Critical Planning Concern.
Right, special district.
Correct.
And that's put forth by the planning board.
That's correct.
John?
Uh, Chris, if I could just, uh, back up, uh, one, to one of the warrant articles there that, uh, we didn't discuss. And I, I think it's important that we mention it, is the San Pond Resi-
Oh, right.
renovation article.
Right.
Uh, uh, that's, uh, I don't know what number that is.
I think.
Uh, Article 36.
36, yeah.
Uh, we had a lot of discussion. Again, this, this brings back to the point of sometimes it's not the, the big dollar amount articles that, uh, that derive a lot of discussion. It's, it's other, other reasons. And this is one of the articles that, uh, generated a lot of discussion, both in our committee, the Finance Committee, and the CBC Committee, uh, debated this quite heavily. Uh, this is for a San Pond renovation, uh, which is, uh, means, I guess, sprucing up or cleaning up the waterfront area, removing a derelict building there, another heavy pigeon building, I guess, in town. Uh, and cleaning up the area, replacing some picket fences, uh, but also adding three or four pieces of, uh, recreation playground equipment.
Uh-huh.
And, uh, from what I've been hearing through town, uh, 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 social media sites, uh, through other folks in town that I've spoken to about this, this little, uh, gem of a beach on, uh, great, uh, Queen, Great Reston Road, is, uh, we're doing too much there. Some people, uh, want to keep this a small, private, if you want to call it, private area, uh, where tremendous amount of people learn to swim there. My wife, again, uh, since six years old, she learned to swim there. Uh, uh, to making it more of an attractive, uh, with the playground equipment. Uh, we voted four to three in, uh, in favor of it. Uh, the CPC voted four to three in favor of it. Uh, and the, but the Selectmen voted, uh, to indefinitely postpone this article. So this may be someone that, that we reconciled, uh, before town meeting. Uh, we have, there has been some talk of maybe a compromise of some sort, of maybe cleaning it up or leaving out the parking, I mean, the playground equipment.
Playground equipment, yeah.
And, and thereby trying to keep it a smaller thing. So that was just, uh, discussion. Uh, I, uh, I, uh, would request that the townspeople get involved on this one.
Yeah.
Cause it's, town meeting unfortunately is not the best place to discuss articles or warrants. You know, uh, it, it may say, why is that? Is this, because, uh, there's a lot to discuss. You could spend hours on one article. Uh, and, uh, so.
Thank goodness for the moderator.
It does move things around, but it's, it's important for townsfolk, the citizens, to get involved beforehand, attend our meetings, serve on the committees, and get informed on these, on these things. That's all, that's all I ask the towns. It's, they're the ones that decide the budget, not, not Joe, not me, not the Selectmen. It's the town citizens. So I just wanted to bring this one up. Uh, it's a relatively lower-cost article, 83,000. I mean, compared to operating budgets, but, uh, it's generated probably the most discussions outside of Brooks Academy. So.
And you wanted to say something, Joe?
Uh, very quickly on that, if I may, yes. Um, the, the board's original vote on that article for indefinite postponement, uh, was mirroring the original action by the Finance Committee.
Uh-huh.
Um, at the time, which was indefinite postponement. As John indicated, they reconsidered. Um, I would expect that this article will come up before the Selectmen at their May 3rd meeting for them to reconsider their vote on that one as well.
Yeah, great. So I think we're ready to close, right? And I'd look to, uh, you, Joe, to describe, uh, what's going to happen at town meeting, uh, the logistics. And, um, yeah.
Thank you. It's going to be a glorious spring day.
It's going to be beautiful.
Moderate temperatures.
Right, no breeze.
Fingers crossed, correct. However, as we said in September, uh, I would certainly encourage our town meeting participants to remain mindful that we're talking about a spring day in May, uh, on Cape Cod in New England. So, um, bring hats, bring water, um, you know, just, um, be mindful and dress in layers.
Yeah.
Uh, we will not be operating under a tent, uh, just as we did not operate in, in September. Uh, there is a, an unnecessary rain date. I'm going to keep putting the positive vibes out there.
Right.
Uh, but we will be meeting Saturday, May 8th at 10:00 AM at the Montemoy Regional High School Football Field, as we did last September. And, uh, just like it was last year, the voters will come in. They'll check in using the poll pads with the clerk's office. Uh, there's no restrictions on our quorum, so our quorum, uh, requirement of 160 will need to be met, and we fi- expect to do that, uh, very easily.
Good.
And, um, and then we'll just have a beautiful day to discuss, uh, nothing more New England than town meeting and what we're going to do for the next year.
That's wonderful. The rain date's the 15th.
That's correct.
But there won't be a rain date.
That's right, that's right.
And I'd just like to mention, uh, for voter information committee, on May 11th, we're going to be taping, uh, a number of the candidates who are running, um, especially uncontested. And it looks like we will have a League of Women Voters, um, forum for at least, um, um, the Selectmen's contest. I'm not sure we will, uh, cause we haven't heard yet from the, uh, two candidates running for, uh, the Water Commissioner, the two-year term. Um, als- also remind everybody that, um, the election's on the 18th. Uh, so we have, uh, ballot articles, uh, to vote on, two, is that right?
That's correct, two ballot questions.
And then, uh, a number of, of, of races. Yeah. Many unopposed, but, uh, two, the Water Commissioner and Selectmen are contested, as we say. So I'm about to wrap up unless somebody wants to say something.
Just thank you.
All right. Thank you, folks. And please get out and vote, get to town meeting, and get to the town election. Thank you. Okay, how do we do?
Thank you. Are we clear?